Downtown Grand Forks, the proud home of the University of North Dakota. This is the time and place for the Grand Forks City Council's Committee of the Whole Meeting. Again, the parole call, please.
Michael.
Here.
Assistant Eric Weber.
Here.
Here.
Lonsky. Danny.
Here.
And me.
Here.
Very good, thanks. Item 2.1, under Updates and Information Items Update, on the 2050 Metropolitan Transportation Plan, a street and highway element. Ms. Cuba.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm here, as well as Jason Carvey, he's online, and he'll be showing the presentation for everybody who's viewing and helping me out along the way. We're just mostly catching you up from June, as to what work we're going to be doing, because come a couple months later, we're going to be showing you the whole document itself. So, I'll let Jason Carvey start off, and we'll kind of talk to you.
Great, yeah. Can everybody see the slides okay?
Yes.
Perfect, okay. Yeah, so wanted to talk a little bit about tonight, about some of the travel model results, kind of the range of projects that we've been looking at, what affect those, what might have on traffic flows. Talk about the state of good repair plan. Talk about some of the projects that are in the plan, some of the draft plan elements, and then next steps. So I think when we spoke in June, we showed you some of the preliminary model results of, with all of that anticipated growth, the comparison of how much we anticipated that, if we didn't make any improvements to the network beyond what's in the current five-year capital programs for each of the communities and for the MPO. You know, again, anticipate pretty significant traffic growth across a lot of the a lot of the corridors. This is a comparison, basically, you can see a lot of corridors, we've got more than 5,000 more cars per day, and 10,000 more cars per day on a lot of these corridors. You know, growth on 32nd Avenue South, on Columbia, on Washington, on Gateway, even down 47th Avenue, even all the way down to Merrifield Road, again, and with all of the growth that we're anticipating over the next 25 years, that a lot of that traffic growth would continue on to the south, but also, you know, kind of need to get into the established portions of the community. So, you know, kind of following that, we went into some public meetings this summer, and then started talking about the types of strategies and projects that might be included in the transportation plan, you know, what should we be considering for inclusion? I think one of the big things, I think, and you guys, you know, we see that all the time, we always have ongoing maintenance and state of good repair projects, it's really important to make sure we maintain our roads and bridges that, you know, we already have invested in and keep them in good shape. So you will see that a very large portion of this plan will be dedicated to that. But other projects we talked about are operations and safety, this is really focusing on some of those probably more mature intersections where widening might have some impacts to, you know, adjacent properties. What can we do to improve the safety and limit congestion in those types of corridors? So focusing on intersections, whether it's signal timing, what we call safer geometries, or, you know, potentially introducing medians here and there, things like that, that just make less dangerous type of movements and improve the safety, whether, you know, roundabouts, you know, things like that. But again, we're focusing on taking corridors like that, that are currently pretty mature, are, you know, in corridors with adjacent development, we want to limit those impacts from widening. We do also haven't considered widening, so basically adding travel lanes, so some corridors, particularly down in southern Grand Forks, where we've, you know, got kind of rural-type roads, where we've got neighborhoods growing all around them. Those are good candidates for future widening, I think we've seen that consistently with Columbia and Washington continuing to grow to the south, so a lot of those will go from current two-lane to three lanes with a center-left turn lane, or four-lane divided. Looking at new streets and new bridges, we've got, you know, in those growth areas, identifying locations where we want to continue new streets. Looking at potential different locations for Red River crossings, and also potential locations for new railroad-grade separations. And then the final element would be paving gravel roads, you know, we've got rural gravel roads as growth kind of continues out into the rural areas. Let's look at paving some of them. Terry, anything you want to add at this point before we go on?
Not at this point, does anybody have any questions? Okay.
Great. So, we've got a list here of all kinds of projects that we considered. We, you know, kind of ties back to those strategies, you can see the orange boxes. We've got some railroad-grade separations to consider, where we basically put a bridge over the railroad tracks. We've got, you know, potential Red River crossings up north, on the south end urban. The study that's been going on between Elks and 32nd, and then down at Merrifield or 12th Avenue Northeast. And then we've also got, in what we call those mature corridors, Washington, Columbia, Demers, you know, we saw that growth, we're anticipating some of that growth would continue causing safety and congestion issues, so how can we manage that without widening those corridors? So those green lines are a lot of those operational improvements. Again, we've got paving gravel roads, we've got some red lines there would be widening's. And you can see that's kind of, there's a lot of projects in there, and if anybody had specific questions, I'm willing to answer those. But again, this is the kind of the list of projects we're kind of going through and considering for potential inclusion in the plan. Okay, I'll keep going, and we can come back to that stuff. So what we did also was look at, so I just showed you a large list of projects, some of those will have kind of take care of some congestion bottlenecks in the future, so what we did was three different sets of what we called build option model runs, so we took a lot of those widening's and some of those improvements and potential bridge crossings, and looked at what the travel model that we talked about back in our last meeting with you talked about what those might do to traffic forecasts, and so on these maps, when you see blue, those are decreases in traffic volumes compared to the do not, sorry, compared to the do-nothing scenario, or that first scenario I showed you, where we don't make any investments. And then when you see the oranges and the reds, those are where we've got increases in traffic volumes. And so, for instance, we've got three different options here, we're going to show you one where we have a new south-end urban bridge that would be somewhere between, again, Elks and 32nd Avenue South, and then a new Merrifield Road Bridge, and then we show one where we just have the Merrifield Road Bridge, and then we show one where we would have just the south-end bridge. And so generally, you see here that with this combination of both these bridges, we see some pretty significant decreases, so those deeper darker blues on 4th Avenue South and Minnesota Avenue. Cherry Street in Belmont sees similar decreases. Decreases on Demers, essentially all the way from Columbia Road to the Sorely Bridge. Gateway's got some decreases. And then the locations where we see increases would be increases on 32nd Avenue West of Columbia Road. We see increases on 42nd, or that should say 42nd Street, sorry. Increases on Merrifield Road with the new bridge, obviously that makes sense. And then I- I-29, when we've got that new interchange and that new Merrifield Road Bridge, we would see some increases in traffic there. So when we look at just a Merrifield Road Bridge, we see a similar, essentially we see very similar patterns, but we see a little bit less, for instance, on the 4th Avenue South and in Minnesota Avenue to the Point Bridge, we see decreases, but not as high of decreases, we saw about 3,000 to 4,500 vehicles a day decreased, and in this model run, we saw about 1,500 decrease, so we see, again, the further out we move the bridge, a little bit less impact, it carries some of that traffic and diverts some of that traffic, but that carries, you know, moves a little bit less of it, because a lot of those trips are already concentrated a little bit further north in the, you know, existing kind of urban areas. And before I go further, Terry, anything else you want to talk about with these?
No, we're just mostly trying to show kind of what our different views are from from the network as a whole, and we're just trying to to get everybody's input on what they see from this information.
A couple, oh, go ahead.
I do have a quick question. This seems different than previous reports, especially the widespread reduction in the kind of northeast quadrant of the city there. Is this because of the interchange at 47th? Had that not been included in previous forecasts?
That would be correct. Right now, we did include it in our models for the 2015 timeframe, because that is the, that is in the process of the environmental process and things like that, so the chances that it will be in our plan in the next, you know, 20 years, is very high, so we wanted to make sure we saw the effect of a 47th Avenue interchange.
And that's quite a dramatic impact.
It's new, so that's part of the reason why there's such a large impact on it as well, because you're going from a zero to, you know, even 1,000 or 10,000 a day, you know.
If we go back to that original map here, you can see with the 47th Avenue interchange in place, we see very very substantial increases down there in 47th Avenue South, which isn't surprising. But good question. And then we, again, looked at just a new south-end bridge, and again, it's kind of halfway in between maybe of, you know, having both bridges and just having Merrifield. It moves a little bit more traffic off of, you know, Demers and 4th Avenue South. It does increase traffic on 32nd Avenue South. In the combination of this by itself, without Merrifield, doesn't do quite as much. But again, it does have more of an impact than Merrifield on its own in terms of traffic up in the the 4th Avenue South, Minnesota Avenue corridors.
Where you'll see is some more maintaining of current traffic in the intra-part of the city, Grand Forks, like between Belmont and Washington especially, but you can also see some impacts into the interior as well, closer to Columbia.
And a couple other projects that are in here, that are kind of having some impact as well, 17th Avenue South, we've got a a crossing of the interstate there. And then we assumed a widening of 42nd Street down to 32nd Avenue. So kind of looking at, you can see those do pick up some traffic as well, and shift a little bit off of, say, Columbia and 34th Street. So that's kind of the high-level summary of the traffic forecasting, the travel demand modeling through the finance, sorry, was there any questions?
No.
Okay, sorry, I thought I heard a voice. So through the financial analysis, we've, you know, we've got a rather extensive project list here, but one of the requirements of, you know, this being a federally, you know, it's federally required plan, it needs to be updated every five years, and one of those requirements is for fiscal constraint. And so, based on kind of the evaluations that have been done in the past with the pavement management study that both East Grand Forks and Grand Forks have completed, and just an evaluation of, you know, what project costs are kind of looking like. Really, it looks like the fiscally constrained elements of this plan really will need to focus on state-of-good-repair projects, and I think you'll see that in the next few slides, when we look at each city's kind of top priorities for each community. And so so what that means is that, just because it's on the fiscally constrained plan, doesn't mean that at some point between now and 2050, it couldn't happen. We just anticipate that we need to find other funding sources, whether it's, you know, grants, or, you know, have a rather good luck with some of the state's discretionary programs, you know, whether it's on the North Dakota side with the, you know, the urban roads or the regional program. We try to be pretty conservative about, you know, what we think we can afford with this plan, so we really think that, you know, the core of this plan is going to be reconstructing our existing streets, maintaining this list of projects that we think we need to incorporate, you know, and try to implement in the future. But perhaps they won't be, you know, federally funded type projects. And Terry, anything you'd add to that?
Good, is there a question?
Mr. Carvey, what I'm taking away from this slide is that over the next 25 years, Grand Forks is going to need to come up with $10 million annually as an avenue, just to maintain the roads that we currently have.
Yeah, this is a very literal and very conservative estimate. This is, to me, the performance, I'm going to use a little jargon, and I apologize, the performance measures that were identified in the pavement management study to keep streets up to a certain standard, the estimates out of that study that we extrapolated were about 35 million a year. So conservatively, I think we came up with about 25 million a year, and that fiscal constraint doesn't mean that there aren't additional funding sources that show up again through grant programs. You know, there was obviously that big project win in that grant up at, you know, at 42nd with a grade crossing up there, that we're that we're showing in this plan as being committed, but yeah, we do basically need to spend, you know, everything we think is coming, we should spend on state-of-good-repair.
Yeah, Mr. Veen, please, sir.
No, I understand that, especially the state of good repair, are there other of those specific safety projects that become essential that are high priority, because we can't just maintain what we've got and then safety issues?
Right, so there is, yeah. Yeah, and so there, oh, I'm sorry.
Why don't we hit the next slide, I think some of that safety information is actually kind of, we're looking at, some of those safety projects are within, or looking at those reconstructions and those, because you can't just do a reconstruction or even a maintenance project without also looking at some of that safety issue.
Right. And the the city's actually been really successful recently with what the program's called H-SIP Highway Safety Improvement Program Funding, have won some rather big projects, improving intersections for safety purposes. We, this plan's going to identify those kind of separately as candidates, but that funding's discretionary, and so from the perspective of this plan, that's another one of those funding pots that from a fiscal constraint perspective, we can't always show in the plan, but that we will, and have talked with the city about kind of the safety improvement project, what their priorities are for that too, and so that's going to be shown in here. And so those will be kind of queued up when that H-SIP funding comes along, that those would be implemented as well, so that's a good point.
And maybe if I could specifically, I was thinking regardless, because bridges are so expensive, and then really, you look at those capital dollars compared to keeping your streets in good repair, but some of the safety projects like Minnesota and Ford, where you do have some significant pedestrian and maybe some traffic congestion, there could need to be improvements in some of those corridors that I see don't show up here as your safety projects.
Yeah, and some of those, yeah, so for instance, we are showing kind of a 4th Avenue South and Minnesota Avenue Operations and Safety Project, and that's kind of a recognition that as traffic volumes kind of increase into the future, that there's going to be a whole lot of conflict between, you know, increased traffic volumes and neighborhood safety. And so we are kind of flagging that in the plan as as a corridor that needs to get some attention and kind of figure out how to kind of resolve that conflict between increasing traffic volumes and, and, you know, a pretty pedestrian-active neighborhood.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Yeah, President Sandy, please.
Thank you, thank you, Vice President Weber. Maybe this is for Ms. Cuba. Why is it that the presentation that you're showing to the city council isn't the same as the presentation that you've prepared for the MPO? Specifically, for example, on this slide, in your presentation for the MPO, it talks about the description of the project, the extent, the 2023 cost, and then the expected costs when, I presume, when somebody thinks that the project might get constructed. Why aren't we seeing the same information?
One of those things is, is that we we want to make sure that we're in agreement with city staff, especially on those costs.
I see.
And when we use our technical advisory committee as our steering committee for this particular plan, especially because they they have the most knowledge of those costs, because they deal with them every single day. We want to make sure that their input is is in the plan, as well as supported going forward, so that there's a clear understanding between planning and what the engineers are going to be doing into the future.
Sure, I understand that, but that, just because you're giving that information to Mr. Veen or Ms. Lonsky, in my opinion, all of that information should be provided to our city council. So were you planning on coming back after the MPO meeting to share the additional information?
As far as we know, we are still under, I was not actually planning on presenting actual costs to our exec board as well, for the simple reason, once again, I wanted to make sure that that information was correct before we presented it to to councils, as well as the public, the public is not getting in our public meeting, we aren't going to be doing that information as well.
Hey, thank you.
Go ahead, Terry.
Okay, so you can see here that a lot of the priorities that we've identified through this process is really going to focus on reconstruction, CPR is concrete pavement repair. And so and then we've got a couple of projects here where we think it's going to be important to start thinking about, you know, incorporating gravel roads, kind of as the city grows, that in the not-too-distant future, for instance, 48th Street there from 32nd to 47th, when that becomes an interchange down there, that we probably need to start thinking about paving that. So, but you can see this list of projects and priorities is really heavy on that state-of-good-repair, and so these would be the projects, again, that we would anticipate would be competing for those urban roads funding from the North Dakota Department of Transportation. But this, you know, you can see that we, you know, we talked about there's kind of a highway safety improvement program list of projects as well, and those are the types of things that, you know, that will be on that, that fiscally constrained project list. Understanding that, and I guess we can, that we we have that whole list of projects that, you know, incorporate where we need widening's in the future, where we've got new connections, where we need to consider safety projects, where we might consider, you know, new bridge crossings, new great separations with the railroad. That list, maintaining that as we kind of head into, you know, the future, looking to 2050. We did the same thing for East Grand Forks, and we'll be presenting that to them tomorrow night. Are working on a draft plan. A lot of the information has been, you know, presented, but, you know, working through kind of the goals and objectives, you know, kind of documenting all the engagement we've had with the public, talking about, you know, the community profile, just, you know, kind of a baseline of the community, how the system performs today, how it's growing and future needs for the transportation system. Talk about that funding element. Talk about how, you know, the project list kind of came to be, and all the input that we've received from the public and from other studies. Talk about what that fiscally constrained plan is, again, that's the, that kind of federal requirement that we use there, you know, what can federal funding reasonably pay for? Understanding that, you know, we've got more projects on the list that will probably happen between today and 2050. And then making sure we've got a few elements here that kind of check the check the boxes and make sure we're doing kind of the intent of the federal legislation. We do want to promote the September 21st Public Open House at River Cinema, just across the river, 4 to 6 p.m., kind of come and go as you please, there'll be staff there to kind of walk through where the plan is, get some input on kind of people's ideas on what's most important in terms of projects for the community. And then, you know, coming back to talk with you later about the draft plan, and we'll be adopting by the end of this year. Terry, is there anything else you wanted to add?
At that time, when we come back, we will be highlighting what those final projects would be in our fiscally constrained plan, as well as what costs.
Very good, so what we can anticipate is, we'll see this again next week, of course, but then, and would it be updated between now and next week, based on the presentation tomorrow?
But we would be.
This is information only, and we'll come back to the council, this is just a committee.
We'll come, we'll come back again
November.
Either October, November, definitely, and present information as well as the final draft.
All right, yes, Mr. Veen, please.
One thing that, I don't know, it seems like it's missing is we've talked about industrial growth in the northwest, north of Highway 2 and western interstate. I don't see any projects that are showing up like that on this list, is that right?
It would be in our vision list. There's some projects up there, but we have not heard, and that's, if that's something that we need to have more, and especially with our, we're still working on some of that final big, bigger list type of projects as well, as well as working with staff in order to know which ones are definitely the high priorities, which ones are not, if that's, you know, you can take that forward with the tag to the tag, and let them know that's what we heard from this meeting, that that's what we will do. That's part of the reason why we wanted this meeting as well, so that we can get what you guys are thinking, what some areas that need to be looked at maybe a little bit more.
I hear Mr. White, just a couple of quick questions. When was, when did the MPO start? When did it become, no, just in general?
In general, and we were officially authorized by the governor in 1982.
Okay, so when we look at some of these studies, is there, we're looking at a 2050 study right now, is there a study that they did back in 82 that looked at 2023, 2025?
Yes.
When that study was completed in '23 and '25, have you compared it to actual traffic patterns in the city of Grand Forks, and how did those compare? Were they, were they highly accurate, were they very inaccurate, were they? So I always wonder about some of these studies that say, you know, we're going to decrease to 5,000 or more, or we're going to increase to 10,000 or more. I'm curious to, again, these are all very intelligent engineers, probably putting all this stuff together, but sometimes I have questions or doubts that they're relatively accurate, when we talk about human behavior and patterns.
And we, that is, that is a very good point, and we do look at that as part of the reason why we also need to update this every five years, so it feels like to staff, it feels like we're constantly talking about the newest plan. But I know, hadn't had not checked back with our travel demand model engineer, and he's been, he was at one point looking at doing some comparisons between the previous model that we did in 2025 to this point in time as well, so I know he's so I can get that, see what kind of information we can get.
Appreciate it. Ms. Lonsky, please.
Can you go back to page nine of the presentation?
Yeah, sorry, I don't have slide numbers in front of me, which one?
That one.
Yeah, so this is the first time I've ever seen a study done, or a report that says that building American Bridge will decrease traffic on all three inner-city bridges, is that now what you're saying?
At one point, they do, they will always, it will decrease at some point. I think there's definitely some for the Gateway Bridge because of the the truck traffic, but there's some other things as well. the truck traffic, but there's some other things as well. Jason, I think you had brought up at one point in time.
Yep, yep. So it, it does have very minor in, on Gateway, it, it's less than a thousand vehicles a day. Um, forecasting on, on same on um uh Demers there, it's, it's less than a thousand a day. But yeah, it is de- decreasing. It's showing slight decreases um on each of those. Um, so again, it, it has some impact, but it, it's it, it's not a whole lot.
I just, I, I, I feel like we should double check this because I feel like everyone who's in East Grand Forks is not going to go to Maryville to crossover or vice versa.
Only at the Point Bridge or in the southern East Grand Forks.
Yeah, so I, from what we saw, a lot of that traffic was some of the, the longer, longer haul traffic probably on two. And so it, it, in, in some of the industrial traffic kind of on the fringes of that side of uh East Grand Forks. So it, it's pulling some of that off um off of a gateway. Um, it does have a little bit of impact on some of the more local traffic um through the Point Bridge, but much, much less than a, a bridge that would be closer in.
Could I make an observation, Mr. Weber?
Please.
Um, so since uh we're putting in a significant investment into North Grand Forks, uh including paving Twenty-seventh Avenue North, I would again contend that it might be worth studying connecting Twenty-seventh Avenue North to Twenty-third Street Northeast in East Grand Forks and connecting a bridge to the north of, of Gateway Drive rather than an inner-city bridge to the south. I know that uh Mayor Gander said that there's nothing up there for the citizens of East Grand Forks to visit. But I would contend there's nothing on the south side of East Grand Forks for the folks in Grand Forks to visit. And so in my opinion, taking a look and seeing how the traffic changes if we do a north-end bridge because I mean, in my opinion, if you look at the map, there's a whole lot of people that live on the n- north of Gateway Drive. And I know the city of East Grand Forks is, is growing to the south. But I'd be really interested to know how traffic changes if we built a, built a bridge to the north and connecting to a newly paved Twenty-seventh Avenue North that is going to have access over to the interstate. I believe that that would make a significant impact in downtown bridges. Of course, that's just my opinion. I'm not a consultant. Thank you, Mr. Weber.
And, and while we're at it, I've, I've long contended that what we should be doing is making a, a railroad bridge to the north and, and moving the railroad out of the, the current corridor uh and reclaiming all of that land for being developed. But that's just my opinion. So um, any, any further questions or comments? Hearing that, this is information only. So thanks. We'll, we'll look for you in October and November.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item uh three point two, OBG three sixty management amendment. Uh, no, I'm sorry, uh, three point one. Election contract to Grand Forks County and appoint uh inspector, Mr. Riss.
Yes, thank you, uh Vice President Weber, President and members of the committee. So now that um a special election has been set for November fourteenth, uh city council has the responsibility of appointing the inspector for that election. Um, Dina Mayant uh has experience um working with elections in the past. We've reached out to her and our recommendation would be to appoint her as uh inspector for that election. Uh, also, the Grand Forks County has equipment and expertise in the areas of the poll books and absentee balloting. Uh, so similar to uh previous special elections by the city, we would recommend um an agreement with the Grand Forks County to handle those areas um with absentee and the poll books uh for us. The rest of responsibilities would be administered uh through the finance department. Um, what we're looking forward to forward to the city council is recommendation to approve uh the uh appointment of that inspector, Dina Mayant, and also to enter into the contract with the Grand Forks County. That contract is attached and um I can stand for questions if you have any questions uh regarding that. Ms. Lombard is also here.
Very good. And I, I do have one quick question. Um, if people wish to volunteer to help with this uh election day, I'm guessing you're always looking for volunteers. What would they do?
Yes, um if they want to contact uh the Grand Forks Finance Department, uh City Grand Forks Finance Department, um we do have a list of names we are going to contact, but if anybody wishes to help with that, we certainly would take that call.
Great. Call seven four six info and they ask to be connected with.
Yes, or if you want to um seven four six two six two zero, and that would be the number to call.
Twenty-six twenty. Thanks. Any questions for Mr. Stuck? We have a motion and a second motion, Mr. White will second from Ms. Lonsky. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same side, motion passes. Thanks, Murray. Uh, Mr. Phelan, item three point two, OBG three sixty management amendment. Take it away, sir.
Uh, thank you, Vice President Weber and members of the committee, all also joined virtually by uh our general manager of the Alar Center, uh Anna Rosberg. And I'm just going to give you a quick overview, overview. I'm going to ask Dan go over the, the amendment number two itself. And then um Anna and I will be here for any questions, uh if you may ask. Um, there are a few attachments. One attachment is the original agreement. So um the city contracted with Global Spectrum doing business as a spectrum venue management to operate the Alar Center by uh one of the best moves that we've made in a long time around here. And it's uh, it's pretty hardening to um be in front of you in, in twenty twenty-three, knowing that a decision we made in twenty seventeen proved out to be a remarkable decision. And thanks to all our commissioners like uh Ken Vian and, and city staff members like Murray Store, Sted, Tangy, all that everything's kind of worked out. So along the way since twenty seventeen.
And thank you, Anna Rossberg.
They moved, I was going to say, most importantly, uh Anna was their, um, there's her first GM job and guess what? She's still here and so
Still knocking it out.
She's still knocking it out of the park. And if there's anyone who's um more tenacious about Grand Forks, I haven't met them. So and, and Todd, yes, yes. Uh, we, we share a lot of Grand Forks. Um, so that's what we've really put into place. And then there were, there was one amendment um that I think is going to play into amendment number two. Amendment number one came in May of twenty nineteen. And with that amendment that's also attached, uh we implemented a qualitative fee um in addition to the already in place of quantitative fee. The important, um, the really important, other than the qualitative fee that was that um when we first put in the quantitative fee um with in twenty seventeen, we did not cap it at, at, at a level. And so what's um Spectrum, Spectra at the time agreed to is that if we would extend the agreement um to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, which would be a two-year extension, they would agree to cap um their incentive fee, uh which was a big deal that we haven't done this week. It took a couple of years to see how that would all play out with the formula. We decided, you know, that incentive fee uh could have climbed significantly and, and thanks to good corporate partners and um in Global Spectrum, they agreed to cap that fee. At the time, we capped that fee at a hundred and thirty-nine thousand um and fifty dollars. Extended it, as I said, the agreement to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. I mean, then that incentive fee, and it is a corporate incentive fee. It's, it's not going to um our employees. We don't get involved in the, the general human resource, how people get paid, what kind of incentives, kind of bonuses. It goes to the uh corporate entity. Along the way, the um finally, the um Global Spectrum has become a whole few group, which is otherwise known now as OBG. And so that's why you see an OBG um lineup. So along the way, some of these companies have consolidated along the way. The, the issue with the, the quantitative fee that um this is addressing is the commission wanted to take a look at, uh, I'll, I'll call variable expenses uh in the budget. And Jared Thomas, which is one of our newer commissioners, wanted to look at and and along the way, we moved that through and, and the commission has approved that. So um there are some years where um you could have variable expenses like snow removal or utilities that could impact quantitative fee. And so there was a sense of how do we smooth that out? And Dan will come up and talk about how we do the math problem of averaging out those variable um hard-to-control expenses as part of that incentive fee. So um I'm going to have Dan go over that. The other thing we did is we reset the the incentive fee for, to inflation, which is why you see the hundred fifty-nine thousand eight hundred fifty-five dollars in there. Um, got a pesky fly up here. Um, and then we also extended the, the term of the agreement to, to the ten-year mark. So it's, it's been extended to on twenty twenty-seven, December of twenty twenty-seven. So that would be our ten-year period of time within that agreement. So I think the next time, if everything keeps going as well as it is, next time you probably will see OBG back here or whatever regarding management of the Alar Center will likely be, we're going to go through another request for qualifications and and have to go look at a, a new ten-year agreement. So it's kind of an exciting time that we're nearing that ten-year period. What a remarkable um now going on six to seven years, your time period of, of really great performance at, with that. So the, the commission unanimously approved this amendment. Um, and like similar to the agreement in the previous amendment, the city council, um we've asked to concur with that and you get your input on that because this is a, a team sport. So with that, I'd ask Mr. Bass to go over the particulars. So you, um, you kind of know how the math works out.
Thank you, Mr. Phil. Good evening, Mr. First.
Members of the committee, um, the, the agreement is really uh twofold. One is that, as Mr. Phelan mentioned, it extends the uh term of the contract to twenty December thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven. Um, and then it updates the, the incentive fee gap. That's a combination both qualitative and quantitative amount on less than a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Uh, but what it does is, is also then account for those variable expenses. Um, those variable expenses are snow removal, electricity, water, fuel oil and natural gas. And the way it, it sets up is that um the incentive fee, the payment of the incentive fee can't cause the Alar Center to, to go into a lost situation. So for example, if before this incentive fee, the, the profit for the Alar Center was fifty thousand, but the incentive fee was calculated a hundred and fifty thousand. Um, the incentive fee could be no more than fifty thousand dollars. And so um what we did is, is came up with a, a method where we'd use for determining that before incentive fee profit, you could be taking a look and, and, and comparing the actual expenses for those variable, identified variable expenses compared to a three-year average of those uh same expenses for the three preceding years. So it'd be a lowly average every, you know, every year we take a look at that and use the lower of the two. So if you lower the expenses, that means the profit necessarily goes up, right? Because your revenue stays the same, but the revenue amount uh will be the whole of those two comparisons. So uh that's the way we dealt with the, with the, with problem. And, and trying to come up with that algebra uh is what we did with the management the amendment to the agreement just before you today. So be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Gasset? Hearing that, um, we have a motion from Mr. Veen, second from Mr. White. Uh, further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed, same side, motion passes unanimously. Thank you both. Um, item uh three point three, uh opioid, uh opioid settlement plan is longer. Oh, Mr. Dooley.
Uh, Council Vice President Weber, uh, and members of the uh council, I'm Michael Dooley, so being responsible project coordinator at Grand Forks Public Health. Here to talk about the opioid settlement strategy. We can go to the next slide. I just to lay a little bit of groundwork on where we're at right now. Um, you know, the primary indicators uh that we're using right now. Um, you know, are, are primarily based off of uh looking at our overdose um statistics uh from all two health systems. And right now we are still continuing our trend of being about the lowest point that we've been at over the past uh eight years since twenty uh twenty fourteen. Um, and next slide. And looking at our hepatitis C numbers in uh Grand Forks as well, we continue to see a significant decrease in uh hepatitis C in the community. Again, as one of those primary indicators of some of the work that we're doing and that we're actually uh here reaching people and making an impact.
Wow, that's fantastic.
Uh, yeah. Uh, next slide. Uh, so tonight I wanted to talk a little bit about our opioid uh settlement uh that the uh city entered into in uh twenty eighteen um and what the proceeds are looking like for that. Um, as well as fit the um city opioid settlement proceeds in um propose a plan as well as fit that in with what is happening both on a um county basis as well as with the state of North Dakota. Uh, so the uh so the opioid settlement um, what I was entered into, like I said, in twenty eighteen, uh we've received settlement amounts from uh, from approximately uh seven of the um eleven um opioid or uh, I guess defendants in these settlements. Um, the numbers vary from a, a high of three hundred fifty-five thousand looking at the opioid distributors down to a low of about fifty-one thousand. Uh, we still have three um settlements pending with Mount and doing uh Purdue, produce the one that you've probably been hearing the most about in the news right now uh with their uh settlement, the complexities of it. Uh, one of the challenges of the opioid settlement is the um distribution. It's over a number of years. Um, the highest being seventeen years, uh the lowest being six years. And so we're looking at for amounts uh really varies by year. Um, you know, from um, you know, a low amount towards the end to a relatively high amount. I'm getting into kind of the early years of the, of the settlement. Fortunately, we do expect this number to go up um as the um additional lawsuits settle as well as there is some uh, you know, some funding amounts that may tweak um as the final um as the final numbers come down um the pipeline uh with the existing um existing settlements that we've received. Next slide. Uh, so looking at um, you know, what, what kind of efforts to propose uh to the, the council. And one of the things that I really noticed um previous times that I've been to the council is an interest in um looking at um, you know, uh more of a focus on prevention and uh promotion. Um, you know, that is work that has been going on in the community. Um, but what the opioid settlement does provide us is an opportunity to spend some of these uh local dollars on a long-term project. So something that we can um, you know, dedicate funds to over a period of time so that we can uh look at that over a period of time and say, and we've made a lot of progress in this. Uh, we can liken it to the tobacco model where once the tobacco settlement funds came, we're able to spend a lot of money on prevention with those. Um, not just, you know, responding to the, the disease burden of tobacco use. Um, and uh we've seen really good outcomes with a lot of the tobacco prevention work that has happened. Uh, I mean, younger generations aren't necessarily using tobacco at, at the rates that older generations were. And so that's what I uh thought would be worth um, you know, putting a large focus on um with our uh efforts. Next slide. Uh, so um, you know, behavioral health prevention comes to mind. Um, you know, when we look at um substance use, usually substance use is pretty multifactorial. And a large component of that also uh ties in with mental health. And so we looked at what we had in the community and uh we have the mental health matters group and we have the mental health matters uh coordinator position that is being supported currently um through some of the uh ARPA funds. And um so that made sense as an area to look at to um help sustain mental health matters coalition as well as uh, you know, renew the focus of mental health matters on prevention. Um, so uh what we'd be looking at would be to fund the mental health matters coordinator position at a, a half FTE position um through the twenty thirty. Um, and twenty thirty, that gives us a good uh six-year timeframe and then we can kind of reassess. I'm going to see that in the numbers at the end. Um, you know, we don't have, um, you haven't uh completely specified, so I wanted to get approval first on what, what that exactly looks like. Uh, but uh a couple of things that we have going for us with, with looking at mental health matters and uh you know, implementing uh behavioral health prevention framework is um the schools have um been working on increasing um you know, increasing the education on uh framework through our prevention frameworks through um a more general programming like sources of strength. Um, so that could be an area where we kind of build upon that. Um, and we also have the emphasis um in the northern part of our community with blue zones. Um, and there could be opportunities to um link blue zones together with uh, you know, with mental health matters to um create both education as well as having um actions that come with that. Um, and um use that as kind of a starting point and that we could um, you know, sample it there and then look at expanding to the wider community. Next slide. Another area that we uh found uh to have a need in the community um would be withdrawal management. Um, withdrawal management is, is one of the only opportunities in the community with twenty-four seven availability for individuals um who um at least need somewhere safe and um stable, um, you know, for an evening if they've been in active use. Um, and can be a really good um integration point for other services. Um, so what we'd be looking at doing with withdrawal management would be Um so what we'd be looking at doing with withdrawal management would be um to enhance their viability as well as enhance our education services by um providing uh short term funding to uh the withdrawal management center. Um this would allow the um proposed increases uh to be sustainable and uh wages at the withdrawal management center. And then would allow us an opportunity to uh link together some of the services that are happening at Grant Forks Public Health a little bit closer together. Next slide. And then looking at the opioid response program, um you know, we have a lot of settlement money coming from multiple locations um including um you know, through the to the city as well. Um you know, the city um or the public health department will be administering both the city and county opioid settlements as well. Uh and so we'd be looking at uh you know, funding a part of the opioid response position uh with these funds. Um we'd be looking at um a tenth of an FTE um from twenty twenty five to twenty thirty. And we did run into a situation where uh there's a transition from the federal uh state opioid response grant um to what we we presume would be the opioid settlement, state opioid settlement funds that would fund the opioid response uh program at Grant Forks Public Health. Um there's a transition time in there that's probably gonna be about six months. Um where we'd be looking at uh potentially not having funding for position. And so we did find um you know, that we could sustain a half FTE for um uh up to half FTE for twenty twenty four for uh to keep the opioid response position um going and um and using some local funds for this would also allow us to be more active in legislative advocacy. Um you know, one thing that came up during the previous legislative session was the certified community behavioral health clinics um as being something that we could promote for the community. You know, using the opioid settlement experience and kind of expanding that out for any behavioral health need in the community. Um and then finally, by um you making sure that we have money set aside for administration, it allows us to be the best stewards of these funds um possible, um the funds that you're entrusted to us. Next slide. So bringing it together, um so the city um has um you know, the city has an opioid settlement that they're receiving. The county has an opioid settlement that they're receiving and the state has an opioid settlement that they're receiving. Um so um you know, the focus on you know, these proposals is trying to fit the um settlements to fit better with the uh you know, the feedback that I've received from um these different uh you know, boards over the over the past few years. And so for the city, I'm looking at um increasing prevention um uh through broad programming of mental health matters. Um with the county, um you know, a longstanding uh challenge has been um supporting medications for addiction treatment at the Grant Forks County Correctional Center. And their their opioid settlement funds will be used for that um and be administered by Grant Forks Public Health. And then um we'd be looking at the state's strategy to kind of continue the opioid response program where we're um you know, engaging with um with providers in the community, increasing capacity for services. You know, running our harm reduction program and things like that. We'd be looking to the state for those funds um to help sustain that long term. But this this allows us to kind of broaden the scope um while meeting some of the um areas where um we found to be a need. Um so I included an estimated expenditures through twenty thirty. Um that was a really good kind of crossover point where the proposed uh full time equivalents would be fully fundable. Um and then we can, you know, as we get closer to twenty thirty, we can reconsider the amount of funds that are available um and reconsider the strategy. Um but I thought this would be a really good starting point to get some of these fun funds started and uh providing impact to the community. Um with that, I believe, I yep, I'm open to any questions.
If I may, Mr. Dooley, so let's go back to slide three for a moment. Because this is a dramatic illustration of the the benefits of prevention. Um I believe that that's what we're looking at here. When did when did Ms. Swanson um take over in the health department and when did the needle exchange program begin?
Uh so uh council member Weber, um Debbie took over and Debbie Swanson took over as uh director of Grant Forks Public Health in twenty fifteen, I believe. Um the search service program in Grant Forks started in late twenty nineteen.
Late twenty nineteen. And since it's been in in uh in operation, um we've seen this dramatic uh reduction in in Hep C cases.
Yeah, it it's been more surprising than uh than expected um in the area. And that's been a similar number of decreases that we've been seeing in the other um communities that have certain service.
Hep C is kind of a canary in the mine shaft type situation.
Yeah, it has become a really, it's become a really interesting surrogate to look at. Um you know, the prevalence of injection drug use and the prevalence of risky injection drug use in the community as well. Um you know, one thing I will um you know, remind the group, methamphetamine is a more common drug of injection in the area. But uh you know, hepatitis C has uh you know, has the possibility to um you know, cause you know, kind of far reaching the effects to the community as well and increasing the risk for uh disease transmission.
Right, we're looking at the whole system over time. Uh reductions in Hep C are tremendous cost savings for the community and healthcare.
Correct.
Plus in individual lives, quality of life, et cetera.
Correct.
Um the uh the the withdrawal management center, um this is a a victory. Once again, Mr. Phil, thanks, nice work there. Um this has been around for a while. Is this funded completely by the city or is this city and county funded?
Uh council member Weber, the um the withdrawal management center uh funding is a collaboration between four different agencies, the city, the county, Earthy Seamen Service Center and uh Altrum.
Okay, great. Um a- any other questions for Mr. Phil? Yes, Mrs. Husky, please.
I guess I just want to point out that at one point, you know, some of these opiates were considered safe and effective. And once the real science came out, we found out that that wasn't true. And so now we are here left to clean up the mess. Um I think it just goes to show that maybe we just shouldn't blindly follow um big pharma and the FDA when it comes to some of these indications. Thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Husky. I I don't believe the science was wrong. I think the uh the profit motive and and marketing is what really caused the the problem here. And that's the basis of the the settlements as well, is that they are not guilty of implementing good science. They've been guilty of implementing corrupt uh marketing and advertising and distribution practices. Any anything further? Otherwise, I'd be looking for a a motion of support. Maybe I want this, but Mr. Weigle, please.
Mr. Dooley, you mentioned blue zones within the presentation. Is that something you guys are looking to work with them? Is this money that we're getting gonna flow to them? How is that gonna work if you can walk me through that?
Uh council member uh Weigle, um that would just be an opportunity for uh collaboration with what is existing in the community. So these funds would be uh these funds would be focused on the mental health matters position and would stay within within the city. Um you know, the engagement came up as trying to figure out a way to you provide a really good scope. Um and so and a way to get um you know, get to actionable items that maybe could help uh reinforce some of that prevention work too. So.
Mr. Venus, please.
Invited by a blue zone. Is there possibly you can get an update on what's going on with blue zones? Because I know it's being enacted in part of the community, right? And and maybe just have some idea of I think of how effective or the status of them.
Uh council member Bean, I'm not directly involved with the blue zones, but I'm sure um we can pass that along.
Mr. Phil, please.
We do meet with them from time to time and so they are quite active. And uh I think uh what I'll do is, if you're okay, I'll follow up and maybe they can come to the next city council meeting next week, Monday, and uh provide a new information up here for you all.
Please welcome that opportunity.
We'll do that. Thank you.
Was that also a motion?
Yeah, motion.
Motion for Mr. Uh anything further?
Oh, sorry, in the motion, can we get for uh necessary budget amendments as well?
Okay, very good. Mr. Bean, and the second, Ms. Linsky, uh further questions or comments, Mr. Weber, Mr. Weigle, please.
Uh that would be to put the the funds into the um the correct funding pots in the city, um both for the city opioid funds and opioid funds.
Anything else? Um hearing nothing else, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposing side, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Dooley. Switching gears here, uh three point four pedal pub ordinance. Mr. Gustin, please.
Thank you. Uh council member Weber and members of the committee. This was precipitated, we've uh had a presentation back back today of this year of pedal pubs. Um this was prompted by legislation that was passed in the two thousand twenty three legislative session, Corey Monocle and his Randall and moving this forward. Uh what that did is it introduced a concept called, they they call it multi passenger bicycles. Um you know, they're they're run by pedals as as defined by the state and by the new legislation. Pedals, there are five seats and it's for commercial purposes only. They also then modified the statute uh to exclude these things from the definition of motor vehicle. What that then did is is would exclude people that were on there from getting a DUI or an open container. But uh the legislation also imposed those penalties, a DUI and open container for the driver of those pedal pubs. Um this then prompted us to, after uh city was contacted by uh party interested in East Grand Forks to start this. Um we started working on the ordinance. I worked with city staff to to some of the issues they may have had to, wanted to address uh in the ordinance. Um also received information or the the uh city attorney from Steve Fargo. Got a copy of the ordinance that they had proposed, I think it was adopted. Um and then also because this the party, current party that was interested in doing this, wanted to start and end their their trips in East Grand Forks. Worked with city attorney East Grand Forks, Ron Gallstedt, to make sure that that our our rules were copacetic with one another. I'll just briefly go through what the ordinance uh does is it introduces a licensing, uh three licensing mechanisms. One is for the driver itself. Um they need to be twenty one years old to have a driver's license and also have their alcohol server training certificate as well. There's also a license for the the pedal pub or the car itself. Um in order to get that, they need to demonstrate that it's uh roadworthy and safe. Um and then also pass an inspection. Uh and then there's a license for the business uh itself. Uh and then they, part of the licensing process is they present a plan uh as to how they're uh maintain the operation safely, that there's insurance as well as identification for the city in the in that application. Uh the ordinance also calls for insurance uh requirements uh to not less than two million dollars of liability insurance with the city name as an additional insured on that policy. It also uh provides standards for the equipment, uh lights, uh also restraints for those that are passengers uh like seatbelts, so they don't fall off, for example, uh or some of the equipment requirements. There are operational standards as well. Um right now, the way it's set up is the location will be in downtown Grand Forks uh is where these can be operated. There is uh to be known alcohol sales, uh no food sales on these pedal pubs, but alcohol can be uh can be brought on the on a pedal pub and it's limited to beer, wine, and seltzers of no greater than sixty ounces. Um another operational provision, and this is some of the information that that both that I got from Fargo and city staff. Glassware, um garbage, you know, glassware on these things, uh there's garbage receptacle. Uh loud noises, uh sometimes they have these large speakers on there, so that that will be limited uh to whatever our noise ordinance is today. Um advertising will be limited uh as well. There are also the ordinance calls for inspections on an annual basis. They can be inspected, these cars can be inspected periodically and then during operations. Um anybody that violates the the ordinance is subject to a class B misdemeanor as well. Uh other provisions that are part of this ordinance is we like the state remove these from the definition of motor vehicle. What that then means is that a passenger would not be subjected to a DUI offense, but we've added language that the driver would be similar to what the state did. Same thing with the open container provisions. Um and then we have some additional uh consumption on streets and alleyways. We had to remove that as well. That's if you're on a on this pedal pub, you're on the street, so that was uh removed, passenger won't get nicked for crying for that. And the last thing is that they can't be used on a bike path, so. Uh somewhat similar and consistent with what the state did and what the city department did as well, so. You have to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions, Mr. Gustin? Yes, Ms. Linsky.
Did you say that it can only have five seats?
That's what the state, it has to have at least five.
At least, yes, gotcha.
And and the definition of our, I think I've, we defined it as the commercial pedal car is same definition as the state.
Mr. Bean.
Mr. Gustin, how do they propel themselves? By actual pedaling or is there now electric bike?
It's both. Um it the you, you're supposed to paddle it, uh but if you get five guys like me, you're probably gonna need a little extra effort, so there's a little one from it too.
So and you know what speed they travel at?
Uh we limited the ordinance, uh only allows them to go up to twenty five miles an hour. But I don't know, I don't know how fast they can go.
I I remember the first time it came around, I guess we were concerned about you going back for Grand Forks, these Grand Forks are gonna be on Traverse Avenue going fifteen miles an hour or five miles an hour. Um how do you, how does traffic maneuver when you have them going that, you know, whatever speed, they need to be safe so you don't fall off. You know, twenty five miles an hour can be rather fast in some ways, so. That to me, I mean, the sounds like it could be great fun, but the practicality of it is something I'm concerned.
And and that's one of the items that was added to the uh after talking to the uh police department. Um having uh a plan that is presented by a party seeking one of these licenses, business licenses as to how they're going to uh deal with not impeding emergency for uh for vehicles. And that plan has to be reviewed and advanced the license being issued.
Mr. Weigle.
Mr. Gustin, do we have an opportunity that the driver could be arrested for DUI on these?
Yes.
But could we also put in our city code that their permit or license would be suspended until they appeared in front of the city council?
The the driver itself suspended, I'm not sure I could necessarily.
Other business owner. Could their license or suspend or permit be suspended by the city right here if they had somebody that was operating under the influence?
The the concern is that you 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 you're making a judgment before there's an adjudication of that particular crime. And so you may be removing a license that ultimately uh it may not be proven out in court. That would be the concern in in doing that in advance.
But we could have to the back.
You could, and in fact, if there's a violation, you can, we can revoke their their permit. Yes, thank you.
Any further questions, guys? Hearing them, looking for a motion. We have a motion, Ms. Linsky, second from Mr. Weigle. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposing side, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Gustin. Uh Mr. Danielson, um item three point five, special assessment, district engineers report a task order for project number eight four eight five two point oh two, district number six oh one dash uh highway eighty one, and associated area area storm pond outfall. Please.
Thank you, Vice President Weber, members of the committee. So I got a string of projects here, they're all having to do with that highway eighty one annexationary that was annexed last year. Um the first one that I've got is an outfall pipe for the stormwater pond that was constructed this year. So typically, when we build a stormwater pond in the city, we construct the pond itself, which is simply put the hole in the ground with an outfall pipe to drain it, all as one. But in this situation, we were kind of battling with where we were gonna put this outfall pipe amongst all of the other utilities that had to go in the area. So rather than hold both of them up, we went ahead and constructed that stormwater pond with a temporary outfall and then held off on the stormwater outfall, which now before you tonight is what I've got is the outfall. So this outfall pipe is going to be the permanent pipe that drains the pond from its current location to the English Cooley. And its route is roughly from the pond down uh thirtieth avenue north. Then it turns and goes north on highway eighty one for a little bit before it eventually goes east towards the English Cooley. So this project is supposed to be very, very similar to the pond itself in terms of special assessments. So this one is gonna follow essentially step by step the exact process that we went through with the pond in that it will have a unique city cost share of fifty percent on it, just like the pond. And the reason for that is because typically they would be one project that would be assessed as one project. So we kept consistency and did them the exact same. So this one is gonna have that same fifty percent cost share where uh fifty percent is assessed and fifty percent is covered by the the city. The total cost of this project is about one point six seven million. And that does include some engineering, which I'll cover here in just a second. So the one point six seven is what we get divided in fifty fifty. Um as we are creating this district right now, we are having a As we are creating this district right now, we are having a consultant come on board to do the design, it's the same consultant that designed the pond. So it made sense to us to just keep them going, keep doing the rest of this project. So A two S is that consultant and for those reasons, they were selected as the most qualified consultant for the job. So amongst approvals, now we are looking for approval of a task order with A two S, the amount of one hundred sixty-four thousand two hundred dollars. And that is included in that one point six million dollar total. So ultimately today, what we're looking for, because it is a special assessment project, is approval of engineers report. Creation was special assessment district, approval of that task order of A two S and then direction for staff to bid the project. And then this project is anticipated to be constructed in twenty twenty-four.
Any questions for Mr. Danielson? Well, we have the motion and a second from Mr. Weigle. Any further questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, same side, motion passes. Item three point six, special assessment district engineers report and task order for project number eight seven two nine, district number six hundred. To thirty-eighth avenue north, storm sewer, highway eighty-one to east of North Thirtieth Street. Mr. Daniels.
Thank you, Vice President, whoever members of the committee. So this project is in almost the exact same geographical location as that outfall pipe that we were discussing just a second ago. But rather than bringing water from the pond to Cooley, this one is going to be the collection point for all of the properties out in that area. So this one would be the pipe that everything ties into to drain to the pond. So this one's bringing water in. And this project is also going to be a special assessment project. However, you may recall last year that we entered an annexation agreement with S and S Trucking. And a part of that agreement stated that the city would not special assess the property for this project specifically. So in tune with that, we are going to cover all of the special assessments for this project. The total estimated cost for those assessments is about one point one million on this project. And that one point one does also include, just like the last project. A certain value for engineering, again with A two S, and that's when it is about sixty-four thousand three hundred dollars. So with this project, again, we are looking for approval of or approval of an engineer's report, creation of a special assessment district. And then approval of the task order of the A two S and finally direction to advertise for construction bids on this project.
Do we, so we still need to create a special assessment district even though?
Correct, yeah, we've been doing that for all these projects because we're still treating them as an assessment. And it gives us the ability to see what those costs would have been had they been assessed.
Very good. Any questions or comments from Mr. Danielson on item three point six? Hearing none, looking for a motion. Motion for Mr. Bean, second for Ms. Lonski. Further questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, same side, motion, item three point six passes unanimously. Item three point seven, change order number three for project number eight five seventy-five, district number five nine for the water main. For highway eighty-one and associated area for phase. Phase one.
Thank you. Members of the committee, so the agenda actually has a list of those change order number three, but it is change order number two, ended up consolidating some prior to that, so just semantics. But just to be clear, this one is for the water main project that is currently being constructed up in that area along twenty-seventh avenue north. And then a piece of that project runs down highway eighty-one as well. This change order covers about a thousand feet of eight-inch water main that would extend north up from twenty-seventh avenue north. And it would be adjacent to the S and S trucking lots. This addition was actually included in the original scope of the project. And the reason for this addition is in that annexation agreement that we just talked about, that we entered with S and S Trucking. There is a line that the city would make a good faith effort to deliver water service to the northern properties. And by extension, all of the properties in that S and S trucking area. So this work with initially included with the project, but at the time of bid, we didn't have all of the reasons we needed to install this water main in the area. So we pulled this work from the initial bid. But between that time and now, we've acquired the reasons that we need to install this water main. So this is just us bringing it forward to get it wrapped into this project to meet our end that agreement there to deliver the water service to the northern end of that property. This change order is about one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's change order number two on the project. And combination of change order number one and change order number two are going to bring us over the city engineers authority on the project. So that is why we're here looking for approval on it. Again, it's about a thousand feet of water main to get us to the northern end of those S and S trucking lots to meet that requirement in the annexation agreement. And right now, we're looking for approval of that change order and the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. As well as resetting the city engineers change order authority on the project. We don't anticipate anything else major coming up, but it prevents us from having to come back here with the real minor change order on the back of the project. And then also any necessary budget that's been given for this change order.
Nicely done.
Thank you.
Questions or comments for Christian on item three point seven? Hearing none, hoping for a motion. A motion from Mr. Weigle, second from Ms. Lonski. Any questions or comments on the motion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, same side, motion passes unanimously. Item three point eight, Miss Parby, project number eight five five two, lead service line replacement program.
Good evening, Vice President. Whoever and members of the committee, the lead service line replacement program was something that we began just a couple of years ago. We did receive funding from North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality, an initial funding of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That funding was actually ninety percent loan forgiveness. And so we're currently in the state of allocating those funds. We do have sixty applications that we've approved and will be able to hope to finish this summer. And then the state had asked us, we were interested in continuing the program. We had put in a request to be on the drinking water SRF project list. But we are able to amend their I U P or their program for twenty twenty-three if the city chooses to continue the program. Unfortunately, the funding isn't at the ninety percent loan forgiveness anymore, it's at sixty-six percent. So we were going to recommend that we would fund it as a city, additional twenty-four percent. And then the ten percent would still be the remainder responsibility of the resident for a maximum of a thousand dollars. It's what we were suggesting for the program changes. The reason being is that it has been a little bit more expensive to do the actual installation. Just a lot has changed over the last couple of years, as you all know. So our average isn't twenty-five hundred to three thousand anymore, it's closer to six or seven thousand dollars to do an average service line replacement. The state's been great to work with, that there's. Complications of the project are not complications, but if there's things to go around, whether we have to take out some sidewalk, et cetera, that is included in the project as well. So we are able to utilize the funding to help residents. We've had a couple of service leads that we found out were lead service lines, so we were able to use this funding for that as well. Where normally it would be the full responsibility of the residents. So I'm just kind of working on trying to get as many of those lead service plans replaced as people want to in their agency.
So great program for local property owners, homeowners. And essentially on a six thousand dollar project, the feds would still be ponying up four thousand. The property owner would be responsible for that six hundred and the fourteen hundred. Cities were being asked to approve that that additional twenty-four percent. To so that we're not foregoing this opportunity of federal dollars coming in to help local homeowners.
Yes, and to and to increase that opportunity or to continue that opportunity, whereas we're not sure we'll. Have as many residents interested without that additional cost share, but it is up to the council.
Any further questions for for Miss Parby on item three point eight? Mrs. Lonski, we have a motion, Mrs. Lonski, second from Ms. Lonski. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, same side, motion passes unanimously. Item three point nine, project number eight four eight oh, what wastewater treatment facility plan amendment? The Grand Forks wastewater treatment facility plan amendment, Miss Parby, please.
Thank you. This is an item that we've been working on for the last couple of years, actually, the initial plan itself was approved in May of twenty twenty-one. I did attach the staff report that Mr. Phelan had went through quite in quite a bit of detail in June when we brought. The phase one of the project forward for approval. And so I wasn't going to go back through all that detail tonight, but I did want to share where the plan is at and what we're actually proposing. So John, if you can bring up that diagram. The diagram, you know, picture speaks a thousand words. So initially, we had talked about changing the reactors and putting in I pass that we needed to do some work on the wastewater treatment plant. Now we're actually looking at doing a couple improvements, like a parallel treatment system, actually, right next to the existing building. So the diagram will show you just to the east of the main building, we're planning to put in. FSB, which is a wide screen building, and SBT as well as an MBR. And so we're looking at those pieces that'll actually allow us to continue to grow within our community. The initial plan was built out to the year twenty forty. The amendment has been able to take us out to the year twenty forty-five. So because we had some changes with industrial users, as as you're all aware, we've had to pivot a couple of times. And looking at what would be appropriate for anticipated growth. This will give us the ability, so as you can see now, it is the ability to be able to build out. So we could have additional five million gallons a day. As well as have that readily available capacity to be able to build out to like another two point five million gallons a day, up to the seven point five. So we're we're doing work, I guess, phase one is beginning. And that actually is a lot of associated work with the existing facility, and that was approved in June. Phase two, which is the next item on the agenda, we're asking that we're able to begin some initial work, some initial earthwork. And it'll be foundation work for these facilities. The contractor PKG, which we have been working with since August of twenty twenty-two on phase one and two. Felt that we could actually proceed and have a cost savings of doing some earthwork and the foundation work this fall of about seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We were able to work with them too on escaping or working on the civil. A two S worked on the civil design, but being able to not build that whole area up for the potential expansion of the project. So there's cost savings from the dirt that's needed to be brought in and built up that area as well. As hopefully, we're hopefully going to see them be able to do most of the concrete work next year with the approval of councils. But that could save us from doing winter concrete as well, so there's significant amount of savings if we're able to begin work this fall as well. So the first staff report, we're actually asking for an amendment to the facility plan, which. Which really is the recommendation that you're seeing here in front of you today.
And you've started giving us information on three ten, but we'll take this separately, so on three point nine, any questions from Miss Parby? Mr. Bean, please.
You know, maybe outside of this meeting between now and council, maybe get into more detail. But have we looked at the lifecycle costs of what we're trying to do? Because you're leaving the existing facility operating, right?
Correct.
And then you'll start a new one with the with the. Thought or whatever that in the future you'll expand the news, right?
Yes.
And then and then the existing facility eventually goes away?
Yeah, no, they can continue to operate parallel together.
So they'll always be parallel, but the existing facility, of course, isn't in new condition instead. Old condition, that's why I was wondering about the lifecycle costs. The new one's pretty easy, the old one's going to continue to have maintenance operation, right?
We have done a lot of the upgrades that have been needed, so the actual phase one work that's being done now. Are they planning to start the first week in November? That's about nine point six million dollars worth of improvements, so. Maybe not, but to the state of being brand new, but definitely being able to expect to be able to support the systems for an additional. I guess I have to check on the lifecycle, whether it's twenty to fifty years timeframe and of course.
And that technology is still working well because it was pretty new when we first put it in.
Yes, and and as you can recall, we had talked about changing those bioreactors, right? Instead of building those out, we were going to do some improvements to those bioreactors, but then decided it really was best. And the and the report itself does go through all that detail and we'd be happy to sit down with you and even talk with the engineering team on that too. About, you know, the proposal and how we came to the parallel treatment because of its opportunity with additional. Growth in our community from residential as well as industrial.
If I remember right, PKG was. I don't know, sounded like very phenomenal or good PM, right?
Absolutely, we've had a great experience with them to date, they've been right along with us while we're doing the design and the. The guaranteed maximum price or looking at the total project costs.
Yeah, so so we will have a GMP on this one here when we're all done at some point.
Yep, and so in in phase two, we're actually at sixty percent GMP. And so I did include that with the staff reports and we can go through that. The sixty percent GMP, we're at a total of ninety-two million for the total project costs. We were at eighty point nine million or nine. Eight point nine or eighty-one is what it says in there, a million at the thirty percent GMP, but some stuff has changed. From the guaranteed maximum price from thirty percent to sixty percent. We had to bring over the generator that was part of phase one. We also included a road to get in from the south end to access to this site. Staff has challenges getting to that site, it's it's really bare and windy out there and that road fills in very, very fast. Plus, it's not in very good shape, so from a construction standpoint, we're going to build a road that goes up, so that's an additional cost to there. So there's some of those details in there that we could definitely review with you. But there they will be at ninety percent GMP. Within the next month, but it'll have it will have some time to review it. So the current GMP, not to get into too many details without answering your question, is we want to review that. They had indicated that the number is higher than they anticipate, we're still at like a seven percent contingency. Where we will drop that down to three percent and see that drop down as well as, you know, they were getting told from vendors that this is twenty percent higher. Because we're not bidding it at this point, but at the ninety to a hundred percent, we'll see those actual bids.
And I don't think that's too surprising because the escalation it's happened with construction and delivery and everything in the last eight months or whatever. It's been significant, so but anyway, the the GMP would be closer to you said ninety-two.
Ninety-two million is where we're at for the total project cost, what the phase two GMP at this point in time, correct? We did have the thirty percent GMP cost at the eighty eighty point nine million. When we did cost of service this fall, we did not have a sixty percent at the time, but we do have the increase in the rates for your twenty twenty-four budget that are proposed. Those are four four point five percent increase for residential and five point five percent for commercial and industrial. As well as our VOD and TKM and TSS. Those in, there were slight increases in those as well, so we'll have to. Continue as we refine that final GMP and or the project, we'll have to continue to look at our cost of service and our utility rates going forward. We were able to, over the last couple of years. To take off, I think it was supposed to, it was forty million in in debt service, so that's been a long time coming and frustrating. But now it's time to move ahead and make additional improvements. Sorry, we're still back on the facility plan.
That sounded like a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Very good. Thanks, of course, thanks. A motion for Mr. Bean, second for Ms. Lonski. Further questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, same side, motion passes unanimously. Miss Parby, item three point one zero, project number eight five six nine wastewater treatment, phase two project eighty-five sixty-nine. We have a motion from Mr. Weigle, second from Mrs. Solsky, further questions or comments in the. Motion.
Can I just say one thing?
Yes, please.
I did speak with Mr. Goss and he did not have a chance to review that contract. He did, he he was okay with us putting it on the agenda tonight, but we might see changes before next week, but we just wanted to let you know that. It is in his hands and and with what was passed.
Thanks for that note, any any change in the motion? Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, same side, motion passes, thank you, Miss Parby. Any further discussion matters?
Just whatever, yes, Mr. White. Maybe echo a little bit of what President Sandy said as far as the study on the North End Bridge. I know we've been looking at a lot of different options all over the place, but maybe that's one we look at, the doesn't work, we put it to bed and move on.
Mrs. S, Mrs. Soski.
I don't think so, thank you.
Ms. Lonski. Mr. Bean, anybody still with us online, all right, otherwise looking for a motion. Ah, Mr. Phelan, please.
We're we're going to be at the council chambers on Monday and John Burns from City checked out everything and and. Is everything a go for next Monday in the council chambers? Okay, so you should get a finalized note, but we'll give you a primer this week, but it looks like we're good to go with the technology. Next week, Monday at the council chambers and maybe have, well, the only thing you need to bring us somewhere.
I should bring my chair.
We have your chairs, but the chairs in the audience, we have to transfer some over here, so back and forth for a little while. But so we're excited to get back in that space.
Let me know if I can help with chairs.
Thank you. Thank you.
Very good. Looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion for Mrs. Soski, second, Mr. Weigle, all in favor, signify by saying aye. You use the journey, please.